And you look much younger than her, so I don't know.
Yeah. We'll go ahead at four after, one of, four minutes after one o'clock and bring our meeting back into session out of our lunch recess at this time. And Anne? Younger Anne?
Alright, so I have a few things on the agenda, and I guess we'll just go in order. So the first thing is the investment policy. Just to summarize, ORS, Chapter 294 dictates how municipalities can invest surplus funds. So in that ORS, it tells us where and what we can invest in, and that the maturities we can go out to is eighteen months. To do something longer than eighteen months, or to be in the Oregon Intermediate Fund requires an investment policy adoption. The process includes the Oregon Short Term Fund Board. They review the policy, they make comments, and then provide that back to the county in the form of a letter that you have before you too. So, the goal of the policy is to clearly state what our priorities are for investing, what we can invest in, and how long those maturities are. It also states the ratings. If we were to purchase local government securities, commercial paper, corporate notes, those kinds of debt instruments, it tells us what kind of rating we want that agency to have before we buy that debt. Different than private investing, public investing has to be safe. We wanna, we wanna invest a dollar and know we're gonna get a dollar back as much as it's possible to know that. So the first objective of our policy is safety. Second is liquidity. We need to meet the cash flow needs of the county. We have to have money in the bank to do the payroll. And then the third thing is return. It's a little bit different than as a private citizen, a lot of times we're chasing returns. Not always the best course of action, but that's what we do. Publicly, it's safety. We wanna, we wanna protect the cash assets that the county has.
So earlier you said you'd maybe go three things. First was priorities. What priorities you have? Is it those three things you just?
The objective of the policy is safety, liquidity, and return. And really, in that order. Right now, right now going out, this, so this policy would allow us to go out to thirty-six months on an investment that we're looking at. I can tell you right now that still, for me, it's very prospect. We're watching interest rates climb. So to lock in on an interest rate right now for thirty-six months, I'm not sure I'm comfortable doing. The other reason I really wanted to implement this policy though was for the Oregon Intermediate Fund, and that availability to us as an investment tool. A little background on that, it's still managed by the Oregon Investment Council, who does the local government investment pool for overnight dollars. Because this is intermediate in nature, it has longer maturities, and they can't, they can't guarantee our dollars like they do in the short-term investment pool. But, that being said, those longer maturities right now are also not paying as well as they did in different market environments. Just our interest rates rising so quickly, even that intermediate fund is not doing as well as they had projected. So, my whole goal for this policy was again, go out thirty-six months and provide for that intermediate fund when and if that looks like a reasonable investment for the county.
This policy gives you the tools to do things that you think will arise in the future, and that's what it is. It's a policy that allows for that.
Yes. Doesn't mean that I'm going to tomorrow, jump into something.
In your recommendation, we do have it on the agenda tomorrow. Quite honestly, unless the board feels differently, I'd just assume dealing with it today because, Anne, I don't think we'll be there tomorrow.
It's up to you. I actually thought if I, if, because I felt like I had a few things on the agenda. If you'd like me to attend tomorrow, I can. If you wanna move ahead on things today, that's okay.
If, if that works, and you'd said something about that, but if that works into your schedule, then definitely, because I think the explanation of this, while it's fairly straightforward, you know it inside and out, I think, I know I would butcher it to death in trying to describe our policy.
If we have an audience, they would like to know how we've done.
Okay.
Special winners, what do you think?
We'll leave it up to Anne if she wants to travel. No, I'm good both ways.
Yep. Will this plan on you coming up tomorrow?
Okay.
I do see this will be a burden upon you. Not a burden, this will be responsibility upon you. This has to be formally adopted every year, bringing this, so this is something to come before the board. If we accept this tomorrow annually, to be adopted. Whether there's any changes, no changes or not. It's bottom reed then.
I wish we had the ability to invest in amounts not much. It's considered a more than government securities. What's called the G Fund through the federal government. That is a guarantee. Guaranteed you won't get less than zero.
Yeah, and so we can invest in the government, like some of those enterprises, but kind of on individual purchases instead of a big fund like that. But that is, that is kind of the idea of the intermediate fund. However, they're going even further than just government securities. Okay, next on the list are budget resolutions. So I have two before you. Twenty sixteen dash fourteen is for the Fair Board. They are going to have more capital expenditures than budgeted due to the sign. So we did approve a few projects for them through our open and compressed process last year. But then over and above that, they're able to get some donations, plus have some of their own revenue to change the sign out on the highway which is installed. We've all already seen it, it looks great. So this resolution allows a little additional capital expenditure to include the sign, plus a few of their ongoing open request projects that are not complete quite yet. The amount is thirty-six thousand five hundred. Revenue sources are coming in from a variety of ways. Collins McDonald provided support. They had additional concession parking and well-use fees, plus they've had donations on the sign as well. Any questions on that? The second resolution is for the Special Transportation Fund, Plan Two Forty-Nine. This is just a capital increase and a materials and service decrease. Really, it's just kind of cleaning up how this project was budgeted. So, nothing new here, no additional purchases, just a cleanup in how it was budgeted. So we'll increase capital ten thousand five hundred and sixty-eight and decrease materials and services by the same amount. Yes. So, yeah, no overall change. Okay, the next item under my group of things here is called the Mediator Memorandum of Understanding. This is actually from Judge Nichols. The court requires mediation in certain cases. He has entered into a contract with a local provider to make that mediation happen, so that the MOU is These mediations are paid with state support dollars. So they're done through our county budget, but he authorizes when and how much mediation occurs. Tara Jones. Tara Jones.
Is this for the certain court mediation that's the, that's the certain court? State funds and not county funds.
Correct. The next item is the E-CIVIS Grants Management Renewal. So, E-CIVIS is a nationwide company that has gathered a lot of data and research on grants and foundational grants and things like that that's available through purchase in this program. We are now ending our, our first agreement with them that was a three-year contract. And I have to be honest, I was not going to renew it. The cost was eighteen hundred dollars a year, and I didn't feel like we were getting that much benefit from it. The grants that we typically apply for, or that we are involved in, are known to us through other sources, not necessarily having to search in a database like this. So, when I spoke with the account manager, I think her name's Stephanie, I talked through some of the things that my concerns, number one was cost, and second of all was use. So she came back with a reduced cost. It does mean one less license, but that's okay. We weren't using it enough for two people anyway. But the second thing that really caught my interest when she was talking with me is their information and their, their research on strategic planning, getting ready to go out for grants. They do so much work with municipalities that they understand there's times that we, we can't even go out for a grant yet, because we don't even know what it is that we need to fund. We know, we know we have ideas, and we know all of these things need to happen, but maybe we don't have the priority yet, and we don't have, you know, the right work done in place. We don't have the planning done yet. So, when she started talking to me about the, the available resources along those lines, I was like, well, maybe this is now where to go. So, I'm asking you to give E-CIVIS another three-year shot at twelve hundred dollars a year, so that we can access some of those strategic planning tools along with the same grants information in that large database. I do look at it periodically, and, and you know, I think of the fairgrounds, I think of like park and rec type things that we're working on. And every now and then, there are things that may work for us if we have our work done first that shows this is step one. You know, this is the plan that's been put in place, that's why we can go do this now.
So as an example, when Ronnie came before us with the, from the board, from the Fair Board, this big grandiose footprint plan for the fairgrounds and replacement of buildings and so forth, do you see those types of things in this program being offered?
There, it's very possible. There's a lot of foundation grants sometimes that are looking for youth activities that would be willing to fund some capital-type investment things that way. I think one of the best, I'm gonna throw this out here, one of the best grants that we have available to us that I think we underutilize is the Oregon Community Foundation. They are giving money out, you know, sometimes quarterly, depending on nature, and they are very geared towards youth, community activities, movie investment things. So, I, I hope that we really exhaust that opportunity first, before we start looking outside Oregon even for foundational grants that we might have to need certain criteria.
So, you know, going back a little bit, Anne, I sense from the presentation today, you were prepared a while back to come and recommend we didn't renew this now. We're feeling different for a couple of different reasons, but the grants, you just spoke top on one.
We don't need this for them?
Yeah.
We do not need them? Right. But I do think, Anne, I did, I, did you, did I, did I provide all this information in your packet?
Well, you did, you did. Very small packet.
Okay, so this, I'll give this to you.
I've been wondering about this. All the people we've been getting out of this for a while now. But I'd like to have more information of that right there.
Yeah, like I said, I think this, some of this information was what kind of tipped me over. That said, okay, for twelve hundred dollars a year, i- if we can move ahead on some kind of strategic planning, and as a county as a whole, I mean, you really, you really start talking countywide whole things too. Not just fairgrounds, radio communications, you know, emergency stuff, you know, so it's kind of figuring out. You know, there's a lot of kinds of, okay, this is a quick project, there's easy money available, we can go make this happen. And it's not number one priority, but it can happen this way. Just sometimes feel like we're doing lots of different things.
Emergency communication's gonna be a bit of a, a little something. Can you make copies of that for us?
Yes.
Unfortunately, Ed forgot we even had E-CIVIS, so I haven't been thinking about it, to be honest.
I would think our department heads and everybody, if you have electronically, is able to send out with the.
Just scan it and send it out.
I think I have a email already, sending this email.
Because coming up, as you're saying, coming up with sporadic moment grant applications, there's so much homework foot traffic that has to be done before, and that would help with that.
From what, you know, I mean, we, we are successful on grants that we're applying for, for sure. It seems like we're more successful when we have a planning document that can go along with it, so.
That's essential, yeah.
So that's kind of where I landed on this subscription. I think that concludes my list.
So each will take that home with us and be abreast of it tomorrow?
I'll email you tomorrow. Yes, so what, what time do you need tomorrow?
Starts at ten o'clock, so maybe before eight.
We'll take County Reg, we're gonna leave probably right at eight or just a little before eight. Would you like to ride?
Yes.
Can you block out most of the day? We need to stop by Christmas Valley tomorrow.
Yeah, I think so.
Perfect.
Okay.
I'll bring you your lunch.
Okay, I'll see you tomorrow.
It's right there. Mr. Jake?
Afternoon, gentlemen.
Afternoon.
Which one do we have first here?
Well, you know, you have the add-on down below, the Oregon Board of Quarrel IGA. And I think we have that right on our list as an addition, so if you wanna start there.
Okay. What that is, is it's an intergovernmental agreement between Community Justice and the Oregon Board of Quarrel and Post Prison Supervision. And what that does, the Board of Quarrel and Post Prison Supervision, they have a hearings officer on staff that when we, when one of our quarreles that comes out of prison is found in violation, they put them in jail. There's an O.S.R.I.S. process. They can agree to serve five days' jail for the listed violations and then report, or they can say, no, I want a hearing. A hearing goes in front of a hearings officer. Locally, myself, I've been a hearings officer for about twenty years. Rachel just got trained as a hearings officer this last year. So, in other counties, what typically would happen is you'd take your report, the O.S.R.I.S., fax it to Salem. The guy in Salem would get on the phone and call our client in jail and have a hearing over, over the phone. What that does is it, it creates a lot of dead time. In that, he may have twenty-seven other hearings scheduled around the state that he has to call in for, and we may just come in at number twenty-seven. So our client sits there, sits there, and sits there, and then he may have to agree for a commission of five days. He may want to, twenty days' jail. So by, by passing the whole Salem route, we know what our jail capacity is, we know what our local resources are, and we know what we can and can't do here locally with our clients in violation. So, since I've, since I've been in Lake County since two thousand and twelve, we've entered into this IGA with the Board of Quarrel to keep our hearings locally, and in return, they compensate us for that. So, I believe, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's a total of just over two thousand dollars for the biannium. So it's about two hundred and fifty dollars a quarter for this last biannium. Like, we did so many hearings locally that our monies went up. I'd say last year, last biannium, our monies were about a thousand dollars for the biannium. So we're up, we doubled our hearings. Good, bad, and indifferent. It's a way to bring a little money and reimburse us for the work we're doing.
Okay. Sounds good. We'll keep it on for tomorrow. And Clamath County Jail Memorandum of Understanding.
Okay. This is the MOU that we've worked on the last couple of years, and I think it was in, I think it was in the works and in place prior to my arrival. But we updated about two years ago from just one bed day, three years to two bed days a year. The only thing that's changed, I have an updated version here, where it was submitted. Jim Bailey and I got to talking about it again. If you looked at the one that you had the other day, this is the one I just gave you. At the top there, bold, it says Centerville eleven forty-five. On the one that you have in your packet, it just says eleven forty-five. So there was some confusion. Are we getting eleven hundred and forty-five bed days, or are we getting seven hundred and thirty bed days?
That's what I asked.
So I had it said about eleven forty-five.
Okay.
So the one I just handed you, the one we should be looking at. And essentially, it's the same MOU that we've entered into with Clamath County last year. Prior to this last sixteen-seventeen fiscal year, we made some changes to it that are better for us. Historically, we haven't been able to move female inmates to Clamath County, or special cases, such as sex offender. Because they have their own population of those over there, and they didn't want to overwhelm themselves over there. We have that in, in place now in our current MOU, because we found that we may have a problem with that population at some point in time. Myself and O'Hallum Melb with Sheriff Chris Kaber in Clamath County, as well as Ronnie Bryce and their jail manager, last week, they were over and we met, and we reviewed this. They're on board with it. But the way it's always been, is I usually start here, send it to the sheriff. The sheriff will take it before his board commissioners, and then we get the signed plumper's back. So the cost is the same. It's about eighty-three, eighty-four dollars a day per bed. For two beds a day, it comes out to six to one thousand dollars.
Okay. And that's paid upfront, whether we use them or not?
No, they, they tell us, they tell us about every three to six months. But we just, we just do the, we just wait for the invoice from them. And they're, they're good about collecting the money, and they're good about letting us have our beds.
But it's up to six to one thousand?
At six to one thousand. Whether we use the beds.
Whether we use them or not?
Whether we use them or not, six to one thousand, but reasonable. I'm good?
I'm good. That's that. Community Corrections Request for Proposal Revenues.
Yes, so which one do we have before you first?
The twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand MRT?
Yeah.
Okay. So that is, that comes from the Department of Corrections through Measure Fifty-Sixty. Historically, when I first came onboard, Lake County Men's Health was the recipient of that. Since I began, since then, it's continued with Lake County Men's Health. However, since Lake County Men's Health is no longer in existence, it is now Lake District Plumb Center, there was a question brought up from a community member that maybe we should open those up for RFP, and I thought I'd read with that. So it opened up the RFP process, and RFPs came here for approval, also went to Legal Jim Bailey for approval. They went out, they closed. May twenty-second, we had our interviews with the three candidates that applied for the three proposals for the MRT program. One was, like you said, for Change Barbara Vanderburg. One was Lake District Plumb Center, and the third one named Tara Jones, Family Counseling Solutions. After the interview process, we, the panel consisted of myself, Rachel Frederick, Charlie Tracy with DHS Job Welfare, Renee Kazbaum with the, crisis, crisis, thank you, first name. That was our panel. At the conclusion of that, we, we met, we were gonna take some time, review our notes, review our packets of information. In the meantime, Barbara Vanderburg sent me an email asking to pull her application, to try and resend her proposal. So, it came down to Lake District Plumb Center and Tara Jones. Tara not having had the experience and readiness to give her questions, she identified in that program. We're, we're comfortable and prepared to continue our relationship with Lake District Plumb Center, providing that service. So, today is just for me to let you know kind of where we're at. And then if it's approved tomorrow, to go ahead and move that direction, I will work with those folks, getting signatures on the RFP contract, so to speak, and present that at our, in two-week meeting for the final approval.
So, just so we follow the process correctly, your recommendation is for us to award through the RFP process, the ones that are recommended through here, then two weeks from then is whenever you're.
Signature piece. So today's the intent to award. So I'm just giving you my recommendation of who we should intend on awarding those contracts.
Okay.
And then in two weeks, we'll sign the final approvals.
Okay, so we can approve the intent to award tomorrow, and then the final contracts will be on the next.
Absolutely. And I intend on making it tomorrow for a walk to be there to answer questions should there be any. And I also have a youth that I'm meeting with tomorrow. All right, I'm jury duty, and there's a jury trial on tomorrow. I know I'm not gonna be selected. I'm, I'm not gonna be selected, because the individual is my client, Mr. Luke. So I will be getting, probably getting out of here late, but I intend on being up there.
So, if you could, if you're running late, if you could text Denise, and then maybe the chairman can adjust the time that you bring that forward.
Sure.
Maybe I should've said if you'll text the chairman, and you'll.
Well, I need a date thirty, so I have to, I need a date thirty, so I could be excused by right at nine, so.
As long as you're there for lunch and you buy, we'll put you on the agenda then.
Yes, I'll get there soon as I can.
So, your next one, Jake, is the Sex Offender Treatment Services.
Yes. About in this store, place, same thing, had been awarded to Lake County Men's Health. When Lake County Men's Health went, went into the district hospital, we entered into an emergency MOU because Tara Jones had left Lake County Men's Health for the hospital. So, we entered into an MOU with the hospital for Tara to provide our services for sex offender therapy, because she's the only one in Lake County that provides those services. So that was done here before the board. Hospital agreed to it. And Tara's been, worked in the hospital since then doing sex offender treatment. However, I learned today, well, I learned through the process, and I saw her proposals come in, that she was anticipating leaving the hospital and going in private practice. So, she had a conversation with whomever she needed to have that conversation with at the hospital. And the hospital didn't compete for this proposal. So Tara was the only one that competed. I'm always wary when we just have one, one applicant, but at the same time, that one applicant has been wonderful to work for with our clients, to track record. So I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward with that one applicant. I do know with cost inflation and the price of the ten thousand dollars since I started, ten thousand dollars a year is what we pay for six million year services. I know at some point in time, that may have to go up. I don't know if and when, but I may come back and assess approval, not this year. Hopefully not next month, next this year either, but sometime down the road, I may be requesting up the cost a little bit. So, I'm comfortable moving forward with that house dollar. So I'm comfortable moving forward with that house dollars to family counseling solutions.
Well, and I think it should be said that since it's a set amount, the only real criteria we have to worry about since we're not taking on bids and evaluating is just is the service provider qualified? And they only gonna get what the amount is, so. It's nice to have competition, that helps you.
It is, it is nice to have competition, yeah. She's, she's done some, Tara's done some good things and she's made some changes and she's working on some different things. Right now, the state board, you need to be a licensed sex offender treatment therapist. And in order to get licensed, you get licensed through the sex offender treatment board. Similar to a psychologist board. There's a board for everything, but there's a board for sex offender treatment providers. So Tara is working hard at getting certified and getting on that list to get qualified as a sex offender board. She's been working on that. It's a process. You have to have so many hours, curriculum has to look a certain way. You have to have had so many groups done it for so long. And Tara's right there, she's been working on this since I asked her to when I first came here in 2012. And she's right there, I'm going to go to community members. So that's, that's exciting.
Okay.
Because not all counties have a luxury that we have. We have Tara Jones. A lot of counties don't have anybody. They may have to travel over from Boise and that maybe once a month. We have Tara locally, she's here once a week. She's a Christmas Valley one, her sex offender retriever. Both ends of the county.
That's great. It's nice that she lives in...
Well, she has an office in Mary's Building. She has an office in Paisley at the, in her program services. And then she has an office at the Clay. Christmas Valley. So she's, she's accessible.
Well, and as I said, she lives in the middle of the county, and that's the nicest community she ever...
More so than...
More so than...
Blush Ave, yeah.
So your next one.
I have an announcement before you talk. I just mentioned, Jake, very good. The service of this ten thousand dollars is still coming. All the, all the MRT, no laws, sex offender therapy and the VIP are still on. So, I just mentioned, we're in the same boat with I just mentioned as we are with the sex offender. Services. Tara Jones is our current therapist. And we have a, we have an MOU with the hospital to provide those services with Tara leaving. She did apply for RFP, she was the only one that applied to RFP. So I just mentioned, again, the work she does on that end continues to improve.
We're blessed to have her. We've worked for years to get that services provided in Lakeview to people driving through Key Falls. So we're blessed to have Tara.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So my recommendation and I agree to be working with Tara Jones and then I can see...
Can you present this again because tomorrow?
Yeah, I will. In the meantime, I need to go down to the hospital and talk to Charlie Clay about the MOU that we have with them. Sixty day window that we give a sixty day notice. Sixty day combination, I guess. But Tara was in the office this morning, her staff, with my staff. And told me that she submitted her letter of resignation to the hospital for her last effective day is the fifteenth. She gave her two week notice. So we need to meet with Charlie to find out, is this MOU, I have sixty days before I need to, I need sixty days notice. So we need to do it in the next sixty days, if there's only working two weeks.
So they'll give us some update on that tomorrow?
Probably give you an update on that tomorrow.
Perfect.
Does the hospital have an alternative person to provide that service?
What's that? Does the hospital have a alternative person? They didn't, they don't. And that's why, that's why they chose not to submit a proposal during the process. Because they didn't have that. They didn't have anybody to fall back on. It's been a great partnership at the hospital. Tara's been a therapist and Tara's been, Tara's done great work.
Perfect, Jake. Thank you very much. We'll look forward to seeing you tomorrow as you skip right on.
I'll keep it posted.
Okay, and next item on the agenda is the South Central Economic Development District Contract Discussion. How you doing?
Doing okay. Betty Violet, you want to answer any questions?
Well, yeah. To confirm on the dollars that several weeks ago, if not a couple of months ago, was requested, we need to look at if there's other dollars available, you come back with a reduced amount that you was requesting. At I believe it's thirty thousand dollars. Have you been able to confirm or leverage any more dollars from the town of Lakeview or?
Their budget is still not processed yet.
There's not processed.
We don't know, we haven't. So that, that is the only one. I, I have confirmed all other contributions that were budgeted, we just go like budget process. So other than your, your contribution and what we have asked the town to do for.
As you've had the pleasure, you think, was it or not, has said through several of our meetings now.
Yes.
You see how many people want economic development dollars?
I knew that all along. I know it's a very competitive one. Yeah, and I, I just also wanted to acknowledge, I appreciate it actually, sitting through your sessions this morning. I was a little disappointed KCC didn't acknowledge the bag of, of the BDA grant that was received.
Chip apologized to me, he came up and said, you know, you were responsible for probably that, so it's a three million video grant.
Yes, and so that was, that was something that, you know, doesn't, I don't get the opportunity to go for those big grants very often. I was, I was very pleased that we were able to bring that money to benefit both, both communities. Because I see that, you know, it all is in her light, that everything that is going on is in her light.
Pretty much, so.
Yeah.
So for me ladies, as, as we set money aside within our economic development budget and video lottery laws, we've set money aside there. Thank you for working on getting that reduced down to thirty thousand. It's, my, looking at the money over the time, it's been about the money, not about Ginger or about that part of it. It's about our pay in comparison to the Clamath County or whatever. So that, that's been my driving heart of this and trying to keep as much of those discretionary dollars available for us as these requests come forward. So that's, that's where I've been on this, ladies. And so I'm, I'm good with going forward. I would really, and I'm speaking in the name of the commissioner. Like I said, thank you for getting that reduced down. I think that, Betty, one of the key things for me is for you to give quarterly updates to board of commissioners and probably write that in the contract.
Sure.
And let's, let's get that relationship backwards, supposed to be at everything and those things. Because we're all busy, including the board of commissioners. And I, I would like to see that part of it.
No, I...
I know we have our SCOE meetings and everything.
Right, I understand.
But it's sort of nice to build to have SCOE, actually, in the public meetings here, that views as a tool, so that's...
I, I agree, it's important.
And I, I still, I know that the town's budget must be quite tight, that they're not settled yet, they're still working on it. But I really think that a lot of, and the town is the county. But I would like to see, try and work with them to give a little bit more and reduce the amount that the county is contributing. I would like to foresee that as a goal within this next year. And so that's, that's where I'm at. And I'll let the other two commissioners speak for their side.
No, go ahead.
As far as the comparison of what's offered here and what SCOE offers in Clamath, it's lack of lights maybe. I mean, the seat over there actually does enjoy good stuff. You have a point of your employees here, not just the Lakeview, but countywide has been tremendous. Building relationships and helping entrepreneur businesses and things of that nature.
They really have made an attempt to make sure that we have a presence and are working all over the county. Both counties alone, we must admit, we probably spend more time on Christmas Valley than I do in present.
Well, it sounds like you two ladies have to give people a jumble more, so give a little bit of a lull.
You know, that is why every time I get a loan into my office that is related to like Gino's restaurant where they do have video poker dollars, I kind of go, okay.
And most of the county's video poker dollars come from Lakeview. In fact, ninety percent.
Say that again?
I said, most of Lake County's video dollars come from Lakeview. I think there's only maybe one other, possibly two other places in the county that have video poker. And so...
So if I moved, the money would change somewhere.
Probably.
So we have it on the agenda, Betty, for tomorrow?
Right, and I, I recognize that and Ginger will be attending at that meeting. I have another...
Well, Ginger has something else she needs to do, I think, we can help with.
Okay.
So she's welcome to be there too.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for waiting the day out.
Oh, I actually, I know I sound fun, but I enjoy some of these meetings because it worked a lot. It's a lot of input into what I, what I do usually, so.
It was good information today, really.
Yeah, it's really good.
Okay. I know we're gonna have, I have got to the department updates liaison. We have a couple of other items to set for your evaluation.
And the hearing's still open too.
Yes, thank you. Do we have a scheduled timelines?
I thought they were at two, my understanding was.
Okay. So we'll, I'm ready to sit right now and propose that they had enclosed the public hearing for June 6th, 2017 on our 2017-18 Lake County budget at this time and we will be having another hearing tomorrow. Department of Updates Denise, for addition to, what's your word, Dr. Baker? Okay. Executive, or liaison updates.
I'll just mention a couple of quick things, we've been pretty, I'm tired. I have been following up on the highway well with ODOC. Have not been able to get that meeting set up for sure at this time, but I'm working with Jared and reaching out to Max Kinsley, the district manager, staying in contact with Todd Ford. And so don't have the meeting set up yet, that's staying on that list. Waiting for ODOC to get the open time. I do have the long, the same lines for the different parts of Camas Valley Road up there that you guys remember all the years with Butch Hanson's thing you wanted to do before I retired? Get that out of the state ownership? Go highway up. I do have a meeting set up there to get that re-tembled, try to get that taken care of. Butch retired, over a year, almost two years go down, it's still on. A little over here, I guess, but a little, little over here. So got that in the works, just to give you a heads up, got a date set, I'm gonna meet with some of the key players on that once again. Keep that going.
And private landowners?
Not private landowners at this time, still trying to get it into the forest jurisdiction. You know, this board's told, it has to come to the county first. And we told, told the state, we will not do that unless there's a guarantee that it's almost immediately flipped to the ownership. If we can't get to that ownership of the federal side of it, I think we're getting the word that we need to consider the private owners that being vacated or however it can be done, private owners.
Are you familiar with what this subject is, Jim? Back in the year 2000, when I was moving here from Utah, Governor Kitzhopper rerouted 140 around Camas Valley so I could get around, run my place out of rush. Anyway, they rerouted and the old highway went through Camas Valley property. And it's still under state right-of-way ownership. And it's just a matter of them having somebody to take ownership of it. And Commissioner Winter is hoping to get Forest Service to take it as an access to the national forests.
Key access to it. Just real fast, Fairgrounds, they're moving forward, the plan for you for their restaurants are, went through plan review. There's a couple of things that they haven't noted on there, window UV and a couple of things like that that people get very technical about, which is very simple to just put that in. So that's in the process. So they should start construction on that here before the end of June. And all, everything to be purchased before then. Sidewalks, not sidewalks, within the area of the show ring and everything. Have we allowed for the open request dollars to be utilized outside of what they designed for based on the savings they have? Last two days, they've informed cement by the flowerbeds in front of them and approaches into there for safety. And I won't really say handicap accessibility, but easier accessibility for those that have some challenges. So that's gonna be a real added plus. And the fair board and the fair director, I'd like to tell the board, thank you for making that flexible so these things can happen.
Makes sense.
Yep. So that's just to, real fast, like you guys, there's many other things from back here, I forget to update them. I don't have them readily available at the moment.
This Thursday will be over in Clamath for Cares, Child Abuse Response and Renovation. You know, they set up a branch office over here in public health, but there are some impudence on building because of different EOC COs. So I'll be going over there and working with them to get through that process with motor insurance. Motor is the half ownership of the EOC CO. And while I'm over there, I'll drop in on Clash also, a promise done two years ago. Next Monday, I'll be in Salem for a carbon pricing capping investment. AOC asked me to be on that. Don't know why. Don't know what the subject is, but they, I sent me some information, which I had to read before Monday. As you know, have you, Brad, Brad wrote a basket next Tuesday? And then Wednesday, I may be at the Clamath Lake Forest Health Partnership, but I might have a conflict on that day. Next week, we also have Phil Max Higgins over at KCC that Nick would have been asked to go to. Also kind of working with US Space Law Refuge, they've got a surplus piece of property in town. It used to be their vehicle place. Working with the town to see if they had interest in maybe being a recipient of that piece of property. What was brought up earlier, while Chip and Jim was here on KCC, he was talking about the COCC in Northern Park. I hooked up how parks would do contact people in Salem for him to be able to navigate if he has the desire to make a change up there or is attacking this group.
Back to that piece of property, and I mentioned this to you, if you're gonna be in Clamath meeting with Clash, you might check Clamath Housing Authority, the portable housing, I just think that that, that location could complement the low income or affordable housing that's already here. Just a thought, Commissioner, it all starts with a thought.
Your thought.
You know, just the location there is a challenge itself, but that's one thing that comes to my mind that sort of fits that location. But if you're gonna be over there, you'll be at Clash. And if you can set up some time with Diana Lotero, it might, it might, there might be a branch or something out there that can make that happen.
Very good point. Very good point. Also, as you all have been notified later in the month, that's, I guess, with a... But the Wild Horse Mustang Crayton Facility, trying to have a ceremony of...
I'm having a hard time not seeing feral horses, and I know the buzzword's wild horses.
I don't have the date in front of me right now, but that'd be something we all should, I can. That was a critical piece of getting horses off the range.
Well, as we mentioned to Steve yesterday, we've got to be very appreciative to Steve Ellis for his making sure we had the finances to start that program back up.
He was implementing and facilitating.
That's Saturday, the twenty-second, doesn't have a time, you have July, yes.
Of July.
Yeah. So I would assume that they, somebody's probably invited Steve to that, if not, maybe we better make sure that happens.
Popper's gonna do that.
Okay, perfect.
I mentioned that to him yesterday also.
Steve emailed me or texted me last night, and he was talking about trying to maybe do the other, the same trip. Anything else, Commissioner? I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and have this recess, because we've got to come back in and go to exact procession, we'll recess till two.
And something to the exact procession of performance rate...